Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, May 25th, 2016 at 7:00 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Shaquille Ali. Manufo Liainga Anawai.
Here.
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. And Mr. Ali is ill tonight, so he won't be joining us. Okay. And I think I have some students from, we have some students from George Washington Elementary to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Can you stand up and do so, please?
Put your right hand over your heart. Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, special presentation. Thank you. You spoke up so nice and clearly to do that. And we'll hear some more from our students in a few minutes, so we'll come back to them. At the moment, could we take a minute to review our board meeting guidelines? If I can dig my way down to them and see.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Item 6A, public hearing for 2016 to 2019, CSEA Chapter 233 Contract Proposal. A public hearing will be held to receive public input on the CSEA Chapter 233 Contract Proposal for the 2016-2019. CSEA is proposing to open negotiations on Article 2, Organization Rights, Article 5, Wages, Article 6, Health and Welfare Benefits, Article 7, Holidays, Article 8, Hours and Conditions of Employment, Article 13, Safety, Article 15, Vacation, and Article 17, Miscellaneous Provisions. The hearing is open at 7:04 PM. And I do not believe that any of my speaker cards are for this item. Do we have any? No. Okay. And we have no speakers on this public hearing item, so I will declare the hearing closed at 7:05 PM. And 6B, Public Hearing for Jefferson Elementary School District's Counter Proposal to CSEA Local 233. Public hearing will be held to receive public input on the Jefferson Elementary School District's Counter Proposal to CSEA Chapter 233 Successor Contract for July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019. JESD is proposing to open negotiations on Article 5, Wages, Article 6, Health and Welfare, Article 7, Holidays, Article 8, Hours and Conditions of Employment, Article 15, Vacation, and to update language throughout to reflect recent agreements and current law. And this public hearing is open at 7:06 PM. And again, I have no speaker cards unless somebody has raised up with one. Then we will declare the hearing closed. And it's still 7:06 PM. Okay. And that brings us to more fun, which is Section 7, Special Presentations. We have students from the George Washington LEAP Enrichment Program. Ms. Rochelle Ewen, Principal of George Washington Elementary School, and LEAP representatives, Dorian Louis and Katherine Howley will provide an overview of the LEAP enrichment program George Washington School participated in this year. And 5th grade students will present on their experience with the program and show a short iMovie they created to summarize their learning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members, district office administration, teachers, parents, students, community members, principals, coordinators, and anyone else I may have been. My name is Rochelle Ewen, and I am the proud principal of George Washington Elementary School. I am joined here tonight by my two 5th grade teachers, Roxanne Hannan and Rachel Kerion, as well as our technology integration specialist, Christina Crisostomo, who are in the audience tonight. Also with us tonight is LEAP architect and artist Katherine Howley, who will be up here in a minute to speak. You know the saying that it takes a village to raise a child. Well nowadays, it also takes a village to educate a child, and we are all part of that village. I am happy to be here tonight to share with everyone one of our wonderful programs that we had at GW this year. This year, we partnered with LEAP Arts in Education to provide an art residency for every student at GW. Our partnership with LEAP began several years ago when we worked with one of their architects to provide an architectural class for the entire school K through 5. But unfortunately, we were unable to maintain this partnership due to budget cuts. Well, I am happy to report that we now have the funds to continue the work we started. This year, we were able to offer a variety of eight-week classes to all GW students. Kindergarteners and first-grade students took part in a music and movement class taught by two instructors, Jessica Rosinos and Manolo Devia. Their classes culminated in a combined performance where some students played cooler, water-cooler drums and others danced. There were three performances this year, one Afro-Brazilian, one merengue, and one rigatone. Our second and third grade students were able to experience an African drumming class led by Amadou Dilwara. Their culminating performance included drumming and dancing for both students and families, and it was a lot of fun to watch. This year, our 4th and 5th grade students participated in an architectural project with architects, excuse me, Justin Beetle and Katherine Howley. They looked for a real-world problem at our school and applied their new skills to develop creative solutions. In just a few minutes, we will ask several of our 5th grade students to present what they did and learned through this program. Next school year, we would like to continue our partnership with LEAP and provide an even greater variety of classes. We are hoping to provide a different class for each grade level, giving students something different to look forward to each year at George Washington. I would now like to invite Ms. Katherine Howley to the podium to share more about LEAP Arts in Education program.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Katherine Howley, and I had the pleasure this year of working with Ms. Hannan and Ms. Kerions, 5th grade classes. I'm a practicing architect in San Francisco. Moved here in about 2008 and began working. And I'm here tonight as an advocate for expanding the arts program in the district and continuing it at George Washington. I joined LEAP Arts as a teacher in 2009 and have been active in schools around the Bay Area ever since. I've taught at a handful of schools throughout the Bay Area, including two in this district, both Tobias and George Washington, both wonderful experiences. As well, my other roles with LEAP is I help orchestrate Northern California's largest sandcastle building competition, where we work for several weeks with 5th grade classrooms, partner with architects, general contractors, and teams of engineers to create very large, massive-scale sand sculptures. You checked over on Ocean Beach. There's some more information in there. I'd recommend everybody check it out. It's quite fun. It's also worth noting, I began my path in architecture solely on the recommendation of my high school art teacher, 100%, Mr. Dean Ariama, also known to many of us as Mr. A. In addition to the necessary creative outlets that art programs provide, I'd like to highlight a few aspects that architecture programs specifically bring into our classrooms. First of which being community. As my design team, right here, will in a few short minutes introduce, we worked this spring on, excuse me, we worked this spring on improvements to our school garden. Throughout this project, we learned to view our school as an asset to our community, and we worked to add value to that asset. Examples, as our design team will tell you, examples are, we thought of ways to improve the days for teachers. Where could they, where could they spend their lunch hour? Where's a great, where's a great space for them to be on their off, on their off time? We had ideas around providing healthier homegrown meals for our families that would come straight from our community garden. Another project team came up with the idea to create an outdoor, create reading rooms to work with kindergarten students to improve those skills. And of course, as you'll also see, building a home for Ms. Long's ducklings, which was a high priority. As, architecture inherently teaches community leadership due to the nature of the profession. Throughout these projects, these students were focused not on their individual gains but on improving their community. Secondly, I'd like to highlight that our programs facilitate in-depth integration with classroom teachers' current curriculum. As a broad discipline, architecture is a broad discipline, touching everything from math to history, architecture is a perfect vehicle for students to reinforce lessons that they're already learning across all subjects. For example, architectural history is everywhere. You can see typical geometries found from ancient Greece to the Transamerica Building. In mathematics, we measure our existing sites and buildings. We learn to make scale drawings, which use fractions and spatial reasoning. And as, and overall, our projects typically run in either six, eight, or 10-week sessions, allowing students to work together in project teams, building leadership and delegation in these project teams, all culminating in final presentations to the entire class. Lastly, architecture programs lend themselves to, lend, excuse me, architecture programs lend itself to a growth mindset style of learning. Creative projects over the course of several weeks allow for students to work in an iterative process, trying multiple solutions to achieve a desired result instead of aiming towards one single solution. This allows students to be rewarded and recognized for hard work, not correct answers. In the end, this builds the creative confidence that students need to succeed. Additionally, LEAP Arts provides programming like no other. We bring subject matter experts into the classroom to speak on topics and expose students to new roles and open the doors to possible future professions. I see our architecture programs as hugely effective avenues for students to reach, excuse me, for students to reach richer and deeper learning experiences. And I believe they would, they would continue to be beneficial in elementary, well into middle schools where math programs move into more spatial relationships. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce our George Washington design team here.
We are 5th graders from George Washington Elementary. We are here to present LEAP, May 2015, 2016.
My name is Justine Casino.
My name is Salmy Hernandez.
My name is Talalay Matavell.
And my name is Alejandro Munoz.
We were part of architecture, the art or practice of designing and constructing buildings. Architects have to work hard and learn how to draw in different ways. Katherine is an architect who came to our classroom to teach us about architecture. We thought about what our school garden needed and what we wanted to put into the garden to make it even better. After discussing planning and sketching our ideas, we made models to show what the garden would look like with our ideas and additions.
Architects and architecture. An architect is someone who plans how a building is going to look. They plan and design every detail from, for the building. They think about what a space or building needs and what would make people want to be
I was part of the group room 22. In our model, we included a pond for Ms. Long's ducklings because they had no space for themselves. We added extra seating arrangements and more tables for the teachers to sit and meet. We added some fake bushes and cement ground in our model. It is important to have a space for the kids to play with chalk because if they don't, they end up in the parking lot, which is not safe for them and not good for tires. We also added some lamps so during movie nights and other PTA nights, people could visit the garden. In our class, there was another group called the Smarties. This group model included an outdoor library and more benches. They added fake books made out of different kinds of fabrics, and they made books like Diary of a Wimpy Kid, Ugly Duckling, and other more books. They added some compost recycling and garbage cans so during lunch, teachers can keep clean. And at our school, it is important to have no litter on the ground. They also added a cover so that the books don't get wet with our moisture and wetness in Daly City. They chose to do an outdoor library because they wanted people to enjoy nature while reading. They made some fake people to represent people in the garden. They put a rug so students could sit down while the teachers read a book to them.
I was part of the remodeling Cougars. My group focused on putting more tables so the teachers could eat their lunch. We wanted the teachers to be able to eat lunch in the garden. We wanted an outdoor space for the students to do work, and we wanted to keep the garden clean and putting trash cans inside the garden. The little space behind the gray walls or the gate is where the flowers and the sign is going to be. We're going to remodel the tables or get new tables and put wood that does not give you splinters and is more weather resistant. We are also going to put a doormat in front of the entrance into the office because people who go to, in the, to the office might have dirty shoes.
Another group from our class was the Water Drop Squad. This group's model included an irrigation system for their flower beds, tools for their flower beds, more flower beds, a shed that stores a water tank that has a timer so we won't waste, waste water now that we are in a drought, solar panels over the shed, a sign that says George Washington to represent our garden. I was part of the Green Squad. My group focused on constructing a greenhouse, adding some flower beds, putting benches inside and outside the greenhouse, adding a whiteboard for teachers could do lessons outside in the garden. And we also included a little pond for Ms. Long's ducklings on the side of the whiteboard.
I was part of the Blue Squad. My group focused on adding a pond for Mrs. Long's ducklings, adding more plants and bushes so we can have fruits and vegetables to eat, building a shed for tools, and so we don't have to keep tools in a wooden box, adding tables where students and teachers can sit and read books in their class. We also included a fake people in our garden to clean the garden.
Excellent presentation.
That concludes...
Oh, there's more? Oh, that's right, a movie.
That concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Hold on.
Me and my group chose to do irrigation system because we want to save water because it's a drought in California.
What was your group's goals?
My group's goal was to have an outdoor library.
Why did you choose to do an outdoor library?
We chose to do an outdoor library because we wanted people to enjoy reading outside.
And now, that was a fabulous presentation. Do any board members have questions for our presenters? Go right ahead, Ms. Brizuela.
Well, I just want to say it was wonderful. It was fantastic. And I really liked that you guys really had ideas to make things better, and it's good to hear from the children. So thank you so much for participating, being in this, and being so enthusiastic and putting all those great ideas together. I think it's wonderful. Plus, you're learning, right? Yeah. And thank you for coming tonight and speaking to us. I probably don't have questions, but I just want to say how proud I am of all of you. You guys are absolutely outstanding.
Thank you.
And thank you to the teachers and to the principal for all that you do to support what they want to do. Because without you guys, they can't do it either. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation. When I was, when I was your age, actually, I actually wanted to be an architect, and I didn't get to be an architect growing up, but I actually loved studying city planning. So I think your presentation was great, and all your projects were pretty remarkable and amazing. So just wanted to say, great job.
Thank you.
I was particularly impressed in the presentation that none of you were nervous. You were very articulate. You guys all smiled, which showed that you took great pride in what you were presenting to us. And I was really impressed with that because it's hard to get up and speak in front of people. And in particular, you guys brought a project to us that many, it's very difficult. Architecture is very difficult, and you have to be good in many things, in reading and in math, and it's obvious, it's obvious something that you guys all embraced. The projects were so impressive. I wish you all the best of luck, and who knows what your future holds, but thank you to the leadership again at the school because it does take innovation to have these programs find a home in the schools in our district. So thank you so much for taking ownership of that and sharing that with our students. So we wish you all well. What a great way to end the school year. Thank you.
And I will, I can't really add anything to what they've said, except I hope you actually get to build the pond for poor Ms. Long's ducklings. Because now I feel bad that we've got some ducklings that need a pond. So thank you once again for coming and presenting to us about this great program. Thank you to the teachers and Ms. Howell and so forth who made it possible for these students to do that. And thanks to the parents who brought their kids out tonight. I know that you always appreciate that as well. So let's give one more big round of applause to our architects.
You mentioned something. And I think what your children did was planted the seed to maybe make this all happen. And I think it can't happen without reaching out to outside persons that will help to make it happen.
And we do have some certificates to thank you students for coming.
This certificate of appreciation is for Talalay Matavell.
My certificate of appreciation is for Justine Casino.
Many thanks to you for coming. And if you need to go home and finish your homework, you do, you are allowed to do that. This does bring us to Section 8 on our agenda, our communications. And the person wishing to address the board. We do have, most of these actually seem to relate to our close session items about negotiations. They probably would prefer to. Yes, I think, because these are strictly speaking, things for the close session item, I will do, take 10 minutes worth of these. I can give you, let's see, how many do I have? We can do them, okay, we can do them, but I may have to limit to two minutes each because we have eight speaker cards. So we will need to limit those to two minutes each. And I will ask if what you want to say is just, say, "I support what they said," that's fine. You don't have to, to allow people to have, everybody to have their chance in a timely fashion. So, oops, don't take these off yet because I can't read the names. We'll start with Dorothy. I'm sorry, I'm not going to pronounce this last name correctly. A parent.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here in, as a parent, and with two growing boys, the boys have gone through Susan B. Anthony, TRP, and my oldest is now in Jefferson. I cannot speak highly enough for the support that my boys get from the teachers. I also work in the insurance industry, and occasionally, it's a bonding business, and we do sabbatical bonds for teachers, so I do see salaries. I think that we need to really revisit the salaries for our teachers. I have not come across any teacher that has not made themselves readily available on weekends, after school, early mornings for my kids. As a working parent and a disabled husband and two growing boys, I need all the help I can get, and those teachers have never, ever let me down, not at Susan B. Anthony, TRP, or at Jefferson. So I just hope that when you're negotiating their salaries, that as a parent with two growing boys, that you're taking into consideration the dedication that our teachers give to our, to our children. If we can't keep happy teachers, we're not going to have happy students. And longevity where they, they feel the need and the desire to embrace their education as well as the mentors to go to. So basically, I just hope that that's thought about when the negotiations are going through because we need to keep the good teachers that we have. So thank you very much.
Ron Johnson?
Good evening. Try to keep this brief. Mine is a little history lesson. I've been in negotiations for a long time. Back in 2008, we were told by the district negotiators that if we did not take furlough days, that the district would be, would go bankrupt in three years. We took the furlough days. The students in Daly City had three days less of school. Teachers took a pay cut. That year, the district saw a profit, and the reserve grew. Throughout the lean years, when we got no raises whatsoever, every year, we were told, "I'm sorry, we don't have any more money, though." And each of those years, the district saw a profit and the surplus grew. We fought hard to get Prop 30 passed, finally got it in, the district got even more money. We started getting raises that we had to fight tooth and nail for, but that's okay. But every year, we were told, "This is the best we can do. The district just does not have any more money." And every one of those years, the district made a profit and the surplus grew. Eight years. I will be, I would bet any one of you money that this year, the district is going to see a profit. I would bet any one of you money that this year, the district is going to see a profit, and the surplus is going to grow. Is it any wonder, when we're told in negotiations that the district just doesn't have any money, that we don't believe them? Thank you.
I'm here in support of the teachers, especially in their wages. My kid goes to Susan B. Anthony School, and just around the corner was a house for sale, $800,000. I started doing some math. How much would a teacher have to pay to buy that house? It's about $4,500 a month in the mortgage. When you qualify for a loan, they ask that your mortgage be about a third of your total salary, which would come to about, give and take, about $15,000 a month. I doubt any teacher would be able to afford that around the area. I'm asking you to give them as much as you can, because living in this area, as you know, is extremely expensive. And it's becoming more and more difficult for new teachers to maybe rent an apartment, much less buy a home. So, if it's in your capacity to give them a little more money, parents, students, and the whole community will appreciate that effort, because they deserve it. Thank you.
My name is Ali Khan. I've been a resident of Daly City for almost 15 years now. My wife and I moved out here from San Francisco, and we absolutely love it here. But one of the things we want to talk about are my child, who is a special education kid here. So, he was at... He's at Ben Franklin right now, and he's 13 years old. And one of the things I wanted to talk to you about was, of course, as you've been hearing from other parents, regarding the increase in salary for the teachers. I think we feel my wife couldn't be here, because she's in Ireland at the moment. But what I wanted to do was to get up here and kind of let you know that it is getting very, very hard for the teachers to make both ends meet now with the salaries that they're getting. So much so that I wanted to bring a newspaper, and I don't know if you guys had a chance to see the Sunday Times where they did an article about priced out of the classroom. I don't know if you guys have seen this. This was a full-page editorial in the San Francisco Chronicle. So, if you could read that, you'll see how... And what the teachers have said, I mirrored that, that it's been very, very hard of how to make both ends meet here. Then they did also a follow-up article about how teachers, people who are in the same sort of city workers, are getting more paid than the teachers over here. So, if you don't mind, if you could pass this around, please, and show them to you guys, you'll see. And it says it really, really well as to exactly what they're up against. So, my point was that please consider giving them a raise of at least 5% or more to really make both ends meet, because we're looking at about a 2.5% increase every year. And the way it's been going, and how they've not been getting paid, I think they're going to start leaving. And that's going to really, really make a big impact in how our kids are being taught. So, if you could please to keep that in mind, we would be very grateful.
I'm Janet Janini, and I teach first grade at FDR School. A couple of hours ago, I was in my classroom getting ready for open house tomorrow night, and I was listening to KQED, and I heard on the news that Palo Alto School District is giving its teachers a 12% raise over the next three years. This was in response to Mountain View's salary schedule, where a teacher with 10 years of experience makes $119,000 a year. No teacher in our district makes $100,000 a year. Most of the... The majority of teachers in Palo Alto will be making that much next year. Now, that was hard for me to hear. It's pretty hard when you're exhausted on Day 170 to hear that you're making 67% of what a teacher with equivalent experience would make in another neighboring city. But what does it mean for you? What it means for the school district is, your LCAP says that you are going to attract and retain qualified teachers. That won't happen if your salary schedule is not competitive. So, when you go into closed session tonight, I want you to remember the teachers that you want to... The qualified teachers that you want to attract, the qualified teachers that you want to retain, and the qualified teachers who've been working here for decades. We're not foolish. We know we can't keep up with Palo Alto or Mountain View, but we'd like to keep up with inflation. Thank you.
I'm going to have to read. I get nervous. Okay, so tonight, I'd like to thank the board for the raises that we've received in the last three years. The increase in my salary has helped me provide for my own children. But tonight, I would also like to remind you that teachers agreed to add days to the calendar year for professional development trainings and the district mandates, which in part contributed to the salary increases. The five years prior to our salary increases included one no-raise year and four years of furlough days, in which teachers agreed to take pay cuts for the benefit of our students and district. During that time, our reserve funds grew. For the last eight years, as you heard Mr. Johnson say, our reserve funds have been growing into a significant and admirable surplus. Our many reserve funds hold several millions of dollars. For example, in our general reserve fund alone, we hold $11.6 million. We have $6 million in Reserve Fund 17. During contract negotiations, we are told that there's no money for a fair raise. Yet, the board approved close to half a million dollars to scan documents. This approval is equivalent to approximately a 1.5% raise for teachers, which could easily have been added to the current offer. In teacher talk, a salary increase is a must-do. It directly impacts students in the classroom. However, document scanning is a may-do. It has no bearing on our classroom. Tonight, I asked the board to approve a fair salary increase, one that will allow teachers to live in the communities they work in. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Chow, and I'm a parent at Marjorie H. Tobias Elementary School. I have three children at the school, and it's a wonderful school because of our wonderful teachers that we have there in this wonderful district. And I'm just here today to support our teachers and hope that they could get comparative salaries compared to other school districts. We're not Palo Alto, we're not Burlingame, but we have wonderful teachers, and we want to keep them here to the extent possible. Earlier this school year, we had a shortage of teachers, not just at Tobias, but at many schools in our district. My daughter was impacted by this, too. She is in third grade, and we had a substitute teacher for about two months before we had a full-time teacher at our school. And we hired a great teacher. She's absolutely amazing. But we need to keep these qualified teachers in our district. If it's for salary, many of them probably would have moved somewhere else. But it's their dedication to our children, their love for our children, that keeps them here. And I just want to make this... I just want to see the district and the board make this a priority in our district, that we keep all of these qualified teachers here. As a parent, I just want to keep... Just to mention that keeping qualified teachers in our district should be a priority, for this significantly impacts our children and their future. You can see from all the parents here that the dedication of these teachers to our children is priceless. And I hope that we can do all that we can to give them comparative rates, and to keep our wonderful teachers here in this community, and just to make this a great future for our children. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, board. Well, just so happened that I was walking for social justice today in a precinct. There's a surprise. I ran into a teacher. She teaches at South San Francisco. So, it was appropriate for tonight. She told me she would love to teach in this district, but she was concerned about the salaries. She is currently now a single mom. She's renting an in-law off one of the side streets behind our Walgreens. She's concerned about the rent scoring up, and she's a qualified elementary school teacher. And I was telling her that we were recruiting teachers, how wonderful our union is, and what they're doing here, and it's like a hidden secret that no one knows at Jefferson Elementary trying to promote. She said, "Yeah, but the salaries." So, it was no mistake that I spoke with her today. So, I ask you, it's not just because of her, it's also because of the teachers here, and teachers that we've all had in our lives. They didn't do it for the money. They did it because they loved us, and because they were there for the education, to make us a better citizen and a better person from the inside out, so that we can go out and create change within our communities when we become adults, and try to make a difference in a positive manner. So, I ask you that it's not just a raise on paper, which I do understand. It's also a raise in our community, a raise social justice, to raise these beautiful adults that you saw here tonight, and to become a better community for all of us. So, there's a great, bright future, and it's just at the bottom line. So, after going through with the City Hall, where I've been at the city council meetings, where people are getting six figures, and then they got a 3.7% raise, and the budget madness over there, I ask you to consider here, and take that into consideration when you do your negotiations tonight, that in our side of our elementary school district, which is a hidden gem in my eyes, that we can make it blossom, and let the rest of the county know, and let them know that we shine, and we want them to bring their monies up here, too. Thank you very much, and support.
And last speaker card, Melinda Dart.
Good evening. I know I'll have to talk fast, but maybe I can be allowed the courtesy to finish. I would appreciate it. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. And I want to thank all the parents and community members and teachers who are speaking tonight on behalf of teachers. It's great to feel some support in the room. Tonight, I stand before you to ask you to give the district administration some latitude to free up some more funds, and consider a fair raise for all teachers, and all employees, actually, in our district. Because when I negotiate, when we negotiate, we are actually negotiating the same raise that classified will get, and even administrators. And we also ask to continue their health benefits at the current level. When I stand before you, as you know, it's because it's my job. It's been my job for 15 years, among others. There were years when I felt I wasn't doing a very good job. There were years when I was told, "There's just no money for raises." And instead of going to fact-finding and declaring impasse, I explained the deficit to teachers. And there were years we took furloughs, and instead of arguing about that, I explained again the deficit to teachers. But now, things are different. And even through all those years of taking furloughs, money has been put away in reserve, and there's no deficit right now. And even though that money's considered one-time-only money, the fact is, it was built on the years when we were told that we had to make cuts. So, we're not asking for much. We're actually really close in negotiations, and that's why we were surprised when it seemed that the district didn't want to go forward and negotiate with us anymore. We're really only asking for about 2% more. And we know that the district needs some reserves, but right now, there is a lot of money in reserve. And we feel that you could use that for textbooks and the other things, and still have a lot of money left over. As was mentioned tonight, the LCAP Goal Number Two says that we're committed in this district to attract and retain quality teachers. But we can't do that if we can't even give teachers a cost-of-living increase to cover inflation, which is 3% in our county. So, we are asking you to consider this carefully tonight, and to realize that things are not a gloom and doom as they have been in the past. And on behalf of teachers and classified employees whose raises cost so little, and preschool teachers whose raises cost so little, we ask you to help educators stay in this area, and to treat employees fairly after years of hard times. These aren't hard times, and we know the difference. We know the difference. So, you can make a real difference in your community. For just a little bit more, you can invest in your employees. You can prepare to attract and keep the best employees ever, even in the face of a teacher shortage, which is already here. So, please, lead the way and budget for the future. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for speaking. As you know, we do not and cannot respond to those comments in... At this time, but know that you are heard. And we have administrator comments.
Well, our students have left, but I wanted to thank them. And I think it's wonderful that we're able to bring something like that into our programs for our students, because it gives them an idea of what a trade... An architect does, a profession, and that they could aspire to that. And it had so many different projects, and these students were perhaps nervous, but they didn't show it. And I think it was absolutely wonderful. I also want to say that I was able to attend the back... The open house at Fernando last week. And the multipurpose room was full of parents, and a lot of sixth-grade parents came in first. They had to actually do it in two different lots, so that they would fit the sixth-grade parents, the newcoming sixth-grade parents, for the kids that were really excited to come into middle school, and then the second group of seventh and eighth-grade parents. And so, that was wonderful. And I also want to just tell everybody, vote. You may not be able to register anymore, but many of you are registered. Please vote. Your voice is important. It is a very important election that we have coming up, first Tuesday of June, and really encourage everybody to vote. Thank you.
Ms. McCulick.
I actually have a lot to share later on the board agenda, so I'll hold my comments.
Okay.
So, I went to TRP's open house the other day. It was nice going back to my old stomping grounds, but this time was the first year they had it in the new hallways, and it was great to see it in operation, and the families there, and the hard work all the teachers and staff have been doing to make things work, especially in this transition year. You know, there's still quite a bit of things going on. It's also great to see the work going on, on the new pieces of the buildings coming up. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that, and also going to the elementary schools tomorrow night. Thank you.
Okay. Board member acknowledgements and commendations.
I'd like to say that I'm soaking up all of the passion and the energy in the room tonight. As always, we don't comment, and I know a lot of times I, I kind of dabble in sometimes commenting too much on things like this, but I definitely would be remiss to not recognize the commitment that each of you have shared with us tonight. And I get emotional about it because I really do feel that that is the same commitment and passion that I share with my colleagues on the board and administrators. We definitely do have engaging conversations, and things that you have brought to us today, tonight, as well as many of the parents and things that we celebrate are things that we greatly value. And I would like to say that I appreciate everyone's commitment in coming forth and being present tonight and sharing whatever it is you have to feel, because these are the kind of meetings we want to have. We'd love to see you more often, to be very, very frank. We'd love to see people come to us at the meetings and communicate more with us about what they're feeling, what their views are outside of negotiations. But with that said, the comments made tonight, as the president of the board did share earlier, your voices have been heard. Your comments do not fall on deaf ears. We are just as committed to ensuring that we put value in the education that all of our, our students are to receive, and we want to see that quality education. My kids are products of this district. I'm proud of that, and it's one of the main reasons why I sought to serve in this seat. So I commend each of you as we come to an end of the school year. Your jobs are not easy. Your parents, your jobs are not easy either, you know? And as community partners, we're here to hold each other up. If it's not financially, it's, we need to hold each other up and accountable in any way that we can to improve the communities that we live in, to ensure that not just our children thrive, but that we thrive as a community. And sometimes it's not about the money. Not to say that it's not important, but sometimes it's not about the money. I think LEAP is a perfect example of innovation and programs that we want to see at all of our schools, and that leadership comes from those who are in a principal or parents, great PTAs that are behind the scenes making things happen. So if you have ideas, help us. Help us outside of just dollar signs. Help us to figure out how we can bring those wonderful ideas to fruition. We'd love to open those conversations, and thank you again for being present. And I love this job. I, I'm, I'm very grateful to be able to serve, and I, I thank you all for allowing me to be a voice for all of you.
Okay. As some of you know, I've been here a long, long time, so I've seen the good days and the bad days. And, and I'm really proud of where we are, but I have to agree with everything that you've all said tonight. I hear about it all the time. I read about it in the paper, and I do know what's going on. And it's, I hope that we can do something, whatever we can do, to at least prove that we've listened and we can do what we can to help. Thank you for coming. I know that only a few of you spoke, but I know you spoke for everyone. And that's, that doesn't matter how many are sitting out here, it matters that you're here and it matters that you're speaking for more than just yourself. I know that when I bought my home, gosh, 1964, I was about three. No, just, I remember looking at homes and, and I, you know, I really couldn't afford some of the houses because they only looked at a fourth of the salary and only of the man in the family. Because women, hey, you're not supposed to be working anyway because you're going to have a kid. So they didn't look at a woman's salary. So you can imagine, we were limited what, what we could buy. But it was affordable, and we did it, and we could afford to pay that. After 20 years, when the house got paid for, we realized that what we were paying for rent, or I should say the loan, didn't even cover the cost of getting gas that time. The gas went up that, so cost of living is up, and houses are up so bad that it's embarrassing to say that you live in California, especially San Francisco area. It's horrible, the prices. And we do need, we do need to look at some solution, whatever it is, that we can do. It's not, it's salaries, yes, but it's also, where are you guys going to live? And we have records that show that teachers come to work with us excited and then leave after three years or four years and maybe get a job in computer field. Not that they want to be there, but it pays a lot more money. So I understand how you guys are feeling 100%. And I don't want to go on a whole lot because I think you really summed it up really well. I want to say how much I appreciate all of you teachers, all of the principals, all the classified. You know, they, they really are making, barely making enough money to pay for their insurances sometimes, but they're doing it because they care about education and kids, and they're, at least it's giving them insurance to help them get through living around here. So I hope that we can be really strong at what we're looking at and knowing that we do have to have some reserves because we can't have no reserves. But I think we have a lot, I think. And so I hope that we have the ability and strength to look and see what we can do. It, it's hard, it's a hard decision sitting up here, really hard. But, so I don't say too much and don't want to pry about it. I love all of you guys and I love what you're doing, and I'm proud to say that we have this district and all of you here. And I hope that we can find something to make it a little better. Now, I'm not saying a little better.
Okay. Clayton?
I want to say thank you for, you guys for commenting earlier about what you, how you feel about making sure that we properly and, properly and, how to describe it, make sure that our teachers get paid what they deserve and what they should get. So thank you for your comments about that. We're all here listening to you, and we have heard you guys. So I want to make sure that you guys know that your voices are heard loud and clear. So, thank you.
And I'm going to give a nice shout out. I went this week, last week, sometime, to the opera night at Thomas Edison. And that was the first time I made it to their opera, and they were fantastic. That is really, I mean, we talk about we have these great and amazing programs, and there again, there's another one of our schools with a program, working in coordination with an outside agency with the San Francisco Opera's programs to bring this to the school. The kids write their little three act, three song operas from each classroom, write them, compose them with the help of the opera people, perform them, make all their sets and cost, you know, everything. Oh, they were amazing. They really were. And all of the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders at Thomas Edison participated, so a huge shout out to them for a great program. And I also just want to reiterate what Ms. Kessler said, vote. Vote all the way to the bottom of the ballot. If people feel like my vote doesn't count, well, here in California, they've already decided those big national things. Guess what? It's the local elections where your vote really counts, where literally sometimes they are decided by a few votes and a very few voters who actually cared enough to do that. So vote to the bottom of the ballot, please. And that's all I'm going to say. Mr. Vidalis?
We're in communications still.
We're in item eight. So yeah, just a real quick, I want to thank the students of George Washington. I just want to say that I was really happy to hear of the environmental considerations that they took into their designs, the recycling, the composting, the water conservation. Those are very important concepts that we need to have living in this area, and I feel like I need to borrow them next fall. We are going to be beginning composting in our district office, and I think that they will, they're, they would be really great teachers to some of the adults who have a harder time learning that concept. So we, I'm excited about that, so I, I need them to come and help me design a lesson for our, our staff and even for our, our teachers when they come to professional development. They're used to it at their schools, but they forget when they come to our office. So we want to make it clear that we want to do this. Secondly, I did receive some communication from the Campaign, Campaign for Business and Education Excellence this last week. They just recently named three of our schools honor schools, Fernando Rivera, John F. Kennedy, and Margaret Pauline Brown. And they selected these schools as honor schools. I don't know the metrics, but the considerations were, they demonstrate consistently high levels of student academic achievement, they improved achievement over time, and they reduced achievement gaps in their school sites. So we're proud of being selected. The last time this award was given, six of our schools were awarded, and so we're looking forward to having more of our schools be honored in this way every year. And lastly, I just want to say that, you know, I agree with the comments that were being made today. I'm so appreciative of the staff that we do have who work in our schools and work alongside us to bring the best that we can for our students. And I, too, heard the same story that Ms. Janini heard, and I just wanted to fly the white flag and say, "I give up. I can't, I can't work for an equitable system, equitable environment in an inequitable system that we have." For a school district that gets twice as much money as we do from the state and has multimillion-dollar education foundations contributing and has multimillion-dollar parcel taxes contributing. It, you know, it's wrong. So I think the energy that we have here, I mean, we really need to direct it at Sacramento. I mean, it is not right that that exists just within 30 miles of each other. And I wish that we could have that. And, and I think we're doing a far better job than Palo Alto in managing our funds. They should be paying twice as much as we do with the funds that they receive. But they, they're paying less than twice as much. So I, I was very proud of the raises we've been able to give our, our staff over the last couple of years, about 20%. And then I just gave up. I was like, is, is this even worth doing when our wealthiest school district and the community even goes higher than we can ever imagine getting to based on our revenues? And so we need to contact our legislators, we need to let our governor know that, you know, this has to change. I don't want less for them. I don't think that's right. I mean, I think they struggle, and, and, you know, even teachers at that rate can struggle, but I want more for us and for our students.
Go ahead, go ahead. Give our shout out to our schools.
I just wanted to say, add to one other thing is that we have extra programs, and they come to us and they make presentations, and it's wonderful. But I want to also remind everybody that for schools that are doing those extra programs, it means extra time of planning for teachers and extra effort on their part to not only do that program, but then to do, to continue what they have to do in the process. So for that, I'm really appreciative. And this year, I did miss the opera, which I felt really bad about, but unfortunately, this happens occasionally. But it was, it's always been excellent, and it's really a great program for the students. But I also wanted to say something nice, that Guard Village, as you know, Brummer property owners are very much partners with them, helping them a lot in different things. And so they did call us, and we allowed them to use the Brummer Hall to hold four classes to come down and have a program to be taught to them about the, what's it called? Aquarium, aquarium program, that they could not do that program over there. So they called it a field trip, but they were able to just walk across the street from school, and they were able to get this great presentation. I sat through one of them. And I will say that the children at every one of those sessions was absolutely amazing. They came in and sat down at their chairs, didn't run around like some people might think they might have done, but they didn't. They were so enthused with the program that they might not have gotten it if they didn't have a space. So we're partners like that. We hope that we can find more partners that will help our schools, and they are doing it. So yesterday, I'm driving by, and all of a sudden, I, I forgot they wanted to use the parking lot. They asked if they could park cars in the parking lot at Broadmark, and we said yes. And I said, "Oh, this must be the day they're working on the school." So as I drove by, I saw people from Charles Schwab out there volunteering about 26, 27, painting the playground. Looks beautiful. The kids are going to love it. Supposedly, I think the day after school closes, I think it's Google, I might be wrong, but any one of those groups is coming in to do a lot of redoing some areas of the school, making it better for the children. We have that in many of our schools. PTAs are going out of their way to do this, and I want to shout out for the PTA on some of the things they've been doing, have been visiting some of the schools. One in particular is in Pauline Brown. Looks absolutely fantastic. So we do have partners helping, but it's not exactly helping the teachers. But anyway, I wanted to put a shout out for people that are doing things for us. And, and I wanted to say that I, I know there's, we go, we get a lot of invitations somehow due to a computer glitch, unfortunately. I did not receive an invitation to go to, anybody here? Yeah, from George Washington? I wanted to be there so bad for the planting of the tree, and my apologies for not being there, but it just happened. And also, I know every year, I've never missed, and it's probably been over 30 years, having the Employee Recognition Day, which I thought's a very special day, to sort of recognize our employees and honor them that day. No gold watches, by the way, but anyway. But it leads to show our appreciation for them, and this was the first year I missed because I happened to be at my granddaughter's graduation intent in Florida. So I do take apology for that. Other than that, I think I, I'll say what I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. No, great. So this brings us to Section 9, General Functions. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, we need a roll call vote for that, please.
Ms. Leah Inga Anawahi?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Okay. Here we go. Item, let's see, where are we? Yes, Item D, update on the May, state May revision, budget revision. Administration will present an update on the May revision of the state budget for the fiscal year 2016-17. Ms. Kessler will produce her crystal ball.
Good evening. The governor has come out with his May revise, which legislature will look at, and they will pass in, they will adopt a state budget in June. And of course, you're in charge of adopting a proposed, the proposed budget for next year as well. But you'll be doing that before the state adopts the budget. Okay, so this, no, this is really bad now. The state of our economy, certainly it's been improving over the years. We have had eight years of recovery. And here are some of the indicators of, of its improvement, and a couple that I want to point out to you is the stock market, the volatility of the stock market. As many of us are painfully aware, that in January and February, the stock market did a bit of a plummet, and it has been recovering since, and now we are back to the December market levels. This is really important because California's revenues are highly driven on personal income tax, and the capital gains from the people who live in this area particularly, in the San Francisco Bay area, pay a lot of capital gains on, in their income tax, personal income taxes. And so it's very, very important to us in this state. Another thing I want to point out to you is our unemployment rate. National average is 5%, and we're at 5.3%, which we're actually tied for 32nd of the worst states still. Four of us tie for that honorable position. And the, the problem here is, is not so much the unemployment rate, it's just that the professional positions have been replaced by service-level positions, and they're much lower paying than any kind of professional position. So, forecasts for revenues. As you know, Governor Brown has, over the years, been very, very conservative in forecasting the revenues. In January, he forecasts it low and then in May, it always comes in higher, except for this year. He got it wrong this year. The revenues came in, are coming in 1.9 billion dollars less than he forecasted in January. That is very significant, of course, especially because we're talking about a governor who's very conservative and does everything he can to make sure that he budgets, budgets conservatively and forecasts conservatively. And this time, it's not what happened. I do want to point out too, so he, in this drop, this two billion dollar drop, basically, it's really coming out of the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty, which has also dropped two billion dollars. And the Budget Stabilization Account is required to receive a certain amount of funds and it will, 2.6 billion dollars, but half of it will go to paying down the state debt and the other half will go to the Budget Stabilization Fund. But he is also putting an additional two billion dollars to that fund. And so, it will bring it up from three point four billion between this 1.29 billion and the additional two billion. It will bring it up from three point four to six point seven billion, which in one year is a ninety-six percent increase in that Budget Stabilization Account. However, the, and this is different from the Prop 98, Rainy Day Fund for Education. That will not be, receive any funds, which also means we will not have that six percent cap on reserves. The reason for that is, first, all of these conditions have to be met in order for money to be put into the rainy day fund. And that is, we have to have a, Prop 98 has to have a test one year. This year will be a test, next year, I'm sorry, will be a test three year. This year is a test two year. There also cannot be any maintenance factor. The maintenance factor is what the state owes to the schools to bring us back up to what we should be getting according to Prop 98, and that's based on a test two year. And we're almost a billion dollars behind there, so nine hundred and eight million dollars. And capital gains has to be in excess of eight percent of the state revenues. So, all three of these have to be met and it's only possible that one might be met, the capital gains, but the others are not met. So, the governor's overall state proposal, it's based on a seven, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy-three billion dollar expenditure budget. And that is from state general fund revenue, special revenues and bond revenues. Does not include property tax or local taxes. And please remember that every bit of property tax that is received reduces the state's obligation to pay towards education. So, the higher the property taxes are, the less the state has to pay to education. And so, Governor Brown's proposal is assuming that Prop 30 sunsets. And we know that part of that sunsets this year. The sales tax portion sunsets in December 2016 and property, personal income tax in December 2018. Of this budget, this all adds up to 173 billion dollars. Fifty-one point four billion dollars goes to education, K-12 education, which is thirty percent of the budget. Now, a lot of people think that all the money, including Prop 30, is going to education. And Prop 30 is just going into the general fund and we get a portion of it, but we're only getting thirty percent. If it were a test one year, we would be getting forty percent. So, the proposal for K-12 education is, Prop 98 is 71.87 billion dollars. Again, it's a test three year. Of the three different test years, one, two, and three, test year it gives you the least amount of money is when the economy is at its poorest. The majority of years are test two years. So, of this amount, these three bolded are the ones that affect us directly. Almost three billion dollars is going to the LCFF, closing the gap. In January, he planned on closing gap 4.9 billion. And, I mean, forty-nine point zero one percent. And now, it's going to be fifty-four point eight four percent. So, there will be more funds going to closing the gap. Now, that gap will be closed by about ninety-five percent, which means there's only, all those funds that we've been getting in the, in the past years as additional funds, there's only five percent left of that gap that we will be getting after next year. There is some, are some one-time funds, 1.4 billion dollars. That comes out to 237 dollars per student. I'll show you on a later slide how that affects our district. And then, there is no COLA. There is no COLA this year. It was at 0.47 percent in January and now it's gone. There is no COLA. LCFF is not being increased by COLA. Categorical programs are not being, well, they are being increased by COLA, which is zero. We will get no additional funds for special ed, child nutrition and any other categorical program and many things. All the rest, there are other things that don't directly affect us because the state is aware that there's a shortage of teachers. There are a couple of programs here, this one, this one, and this one, which is 2.5 million dollars, is very little, to try to get more teachers' credentials so that they can teach sooner. So, just, this I put here every year so that you can do your own calculation. It just tells you how to do the LCFF calculation. And as you see again, there's no COLA. And amount for class size reduction is the same as it was last year. So, you just plug in the numbers here and it pops out with what we'll receive with LCFF funding. So, in budget development for this district and the multi-year projection, as you know, when we do a multi-year projection, we have to be able to cover the current year's expenditures and the following out years, two out years expenditures. So, again, we have zero COLA for this year. For the out years, we have 1.11 percent for 17-18 and then we're at a more normal range for the following two years, which is normally somewhere between two to four percent. And then, the gap funding, again, is 54.84 percent. And the out years, we are going to use the more conservative out year funding. And then, the DOF, the Department of Finance, has these numbers. So, these will help us to be able to meet our required for out years when it comes. Hopefully, we'll get more funds. Hopefully, these numbers will be shy of what we really will get. And we are potentially in a situation of declining enrollment. It indicates that right now that we're down a little bit. But as we go into the next year and our students show up, hopefully, there will be a lot more that show up. And we will adjust our first interim accordingly when we know those numbers. But right now, the budget is based on for, it's 16-17 year, it is based on this year's P2 ADA because we have a declining enrollment protection for one year. So, if our enrollment goes down, I mean, our ADA goes down as a result of our enrollment, that we will get at least the ADA that we got and funded for that, that we got in the last year. After that, we do actually lose it. So, right now, it's estimated at forty-nine fewer students. And so, in the out years, we have 6,095 students instead of 6,144. Hopefully, that will change. Our unduplicated count has been quite steady over the years. That's really good for us because obviously, we get more SNC grant funds, supplemental and concentration grant funds. But as, in a further slide, you'll see, as minimum wage goes up, it will push people out of the poverty level, although they will still not be able to afford much. And if they still can't afford much and they are out of the poverty level, then our unduplicated count will drop and our funding will drop as a result. There are still increases, stirs and purrs on an ongoing basis until years 2021, where we should hit the max. And those will all be incorporated into our budget. And then, of course, our budget will follow the LCAP expenditures. This is, I think, an important slide. It becomes very helpful. So, this is starting when we started getting LCFF funding. And what we have here is the floor. This is that we would have got the previous year in the green each year. What, so that's our starting place. And then, the next one is the gap funding for that particular year. So, here in 13-14, we received 2.4 million dollars. And then, 15-16, 14-15, 15-16, 16-17 is our next year. We expect to get 3.4 million dollars in the gap funding. See how big this gap is, what we're getting here. This is the unfunded amount here for each year. And now, at this point here, we become ninety-five percent fully funded. So, we have five percent less left to get funded. And as we go on, it's very little. And if you look at the amounts that we're getting here, this is what COLA would be at the 1.11 percent and the 2. whatever percent they were for the other out years. That's COLA. And if you look at what we're getting funded, it's pretty equal to COLA. And then, the final year, there's nothing left here to, we don't have COLA for the final year. They don't give it to us for that year. So, but based on the COLA that the state's giving us, this is the COLA and this is the funding that we're expecting. So, given that, we see the new funding that we're going to be getting through these years. The next slide is showing us the increased cost of stirs and purrs. And this compared to this current year. How much more will purrs and stirs alone cost us in the following years compared to this year? And so, next year, it will cost us almost 800,000 dollars more and then 1.5 million, 2.2 million, 3 million, 3.4 million dollars more. The thing about this is that when we went into the LCFF in the year 14-15, it was the first year we went into LCFF. A governor put it in his May revise. In June, the budget was passed and that's when they hit us with, "And you're going to be paying a lot more for stirs." They approved it, but they never appropriated any money for it. This is the increase over 15-16. But when you look at the increase from the inception to this, it's about 5 million dollars. That if they didn't change it from the 8.25 percent that we were paying on behalf of stirs before, we would be saving at, in 2020-21, 5 million dollars a year, not combined, a year. So, that is a really significant thing. And they never, ever talk about giving us additional funds to help us cover that. They expect districts to cover it with the funds that they have. So, concerns and considerations? Well, what's, what we include on a regular basis in our projections, in our multi-year projection, is step and column increases, which equal about 1.5 percent of salaries and benefits on an annual basis. So, for 17-18, 16-17, we'll actually have the actual amounts because everybody will be rolled up. But for 17-18 on, it's a, it's a projection of a one, oops, of a one and a half percent additional cost. And that's almost half a million dollars in just step and column alone. So, if you add that one and a half million to the difference between this and this, it's about a little over 700,000. So, we're talking about 1.3 million dollars in additional expenditures in 17-18 without doing anything else. So, again, no COLA. So, it's important. And also, will the state continue to give us one-time funds in the future? These, this is the history of one-time funds that we've been getting since LCFF. And you can see this current year, we got a very large amount. We got 3.2 million dollars, of which 2.5 million was for the previous year. But we didn't know about it until about one week before the end of the year. So, they had to give it to us this year. And then, next year, that 237,000 dollars ends up being a one point, almost 1.5 million dollars projected if the governor gets his way here in one-time funds. Governor usually does get his way. So, that's likely to come through. Also, just keep in mind that enrollment, if we are declining or not, we don't know yet, but each year, it's something to keep in mind. And our projections that we have, we kind of took halfway between what's, who's enrolled now and who, who's enrolled for next year, should I say, and what our enrollment is today. And the difference is more like 100 right now. And we went halfway in between feeling that we'll get some of them. So, you know, we're hopeful. We'll maybe get more. And then, also, we're still in the process of negotiating both with CSCE and AFT. And so, that will be added to the budget. When I come to you with the budget, we, at this point, we don't have time to change that budget before I present it to you. There's a possibility, we can change it because of all the different things that have to be done. So, but of course, it will be changed when needed. But the presentation in two weeks from now, we'll have it without any kind of a negotiated increase because we don't have the time to be able to change that at this point. Also, we are still conservatively budgeting the LCFF revenues. And the difference in the furthest out year is about 2 million dollars. And then, also, how will the district respond to the slowing down of new ongoing funds? That's going to be something that we'll have to take into consideration in the future years, this year and future years. Additionally, again, because LCFF gap is nearly closed, the further increases are likely to resemble COLA. That's usually what the increases were in the past. And as you saw in that previous slide, what we plan on, what we will get is very much equal to COLA and the years to follow are likely to be like that too. So, we do need more ways of funding education if we're going to be able to attract and retain students, teachers, good teachers, and also be able to provide these additional programs like the arts and music and have the counselors and everything else that we want to provide our students. Again, the Prop 30 sales tax is going to sunset halfway through the next year. And there's no plan on trying to bring that back. The personal income tax will sunset December of 2018. But on our ballot in November, we are most likely going to have a measure that will extend that. And we're hoping that voters will extend that. And then, also, the state is, has increased minimum wages to 15 dollars per hour. And that will be completely implemented in 2021. So, on the way to 2021, the state will have to be paying its employees more. And of course, we're required to pay our employees more as well to make sure that nobody falls below the 15 dollar amount in a few years to come. And so, that will also affect the state's ability to apportion out funds to K-12. And also, again, as I said earlier, bringing up the minimum wage is likely to bring down the free and reduced count, which will bring down our unduplicated count, which will bring down our supplemental and concentration grant funds. I don't want people to be in this free and reduced category because they can't afford it. But making a little bit of money is not going to make them be able to afford their living. And it will be very And it will be very unfortunate if we end up losing supplemental and concentration grants as a result, funds as a result. And just to let you know here as well, this is 2000... The latest they had was 2012, '13. California spent $8,339 per student. And the national average, now this is not the highest, the national average was $11,841. The difference for Jefferson's, 6,144 students, between these two is $3,502 per student, which would be $21,516, $16,288, $21.5 million. The difference between California per student and the national average per student. And again, the national average is the average. It's not the highest. So that is a... Being that we're such a wealthy state, we seem not to appreciate what we put into the classroom and into our students compared to the other states. So the next steps, again, you'll have to adopt a budget before June 30. And it is a two-step process. First, you will approve the LCAP and then the budget will follow the LCAP and support it. The state will then pass its budget, adopt its budget, and we'll make adjustments to the budget accordingly within 45 days of the state passing its budget. Any questions?
I have a question, which is reasonably serious. When they do these COLA projections, do they actually have any relation to what the actual cost of living changes are? Or, you know what I mean? I mean, they say zero, but that's not what I'm seeing is, you know, it's like, cost of living has increased. So what's with that?
Yeah. Well, they're talking about dropping off oil from it because it skews it so much, but clearly not.
I mean, that's what I thought. But I had to ask to clarify that.
Because certainly 0% COLA is not realistic to think that's what the cost of living.
Right.
Maybe the cost of business. I don't... Or international business, but certainly not the cost of living.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to confirm that because I found it very odd that they would claim that it was zero. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And here we are. Item E, our 2016-17 Local Control Accountability Plan Draft. The LCAP is an accountability plan that requires districts to disclose how local control funding formula, LCFF, funds are spent to provide high-quality education programs. Jefferson Elementary School District Administration will share the latest draft of the plan based on stakeholder input.
I actually have a lot of artifacts here, so if anyone's interested and wants to pass them out.
That's what I do all day.
This is an important skill you learn in grade school, passing on papers.
So we're close to a final draft of the LCAP and we're ready to almost bring it to the board for approval in next board meeting, June 8. So what I want to do today is really just give you updates on what's happened in the LCAP since the last meeting we've had on April 27. So where we are in the process, you've seen this slide before, we're in May. The final draft that was attached to the board agenda was presented to the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee and the District English Language Advisory Committee for approval to bring to you. And both meetings happened. You'll see they happened in purple there on May 12 for D-LAC and May 17 for Piac. And so these are just... You've seen this slide before as well. These are all the actual dates. And that's also in the stakeholder engagement part, thank you, in the LCAP. And then tonight, it's a draft. We're not actually required to share this draft with you tonight. The only time we're required to do it is on June 8 at the public hearing. But we wanted to make sure that the board and the public have seen the draft plenty of time before the public hearing. So what's happened since we've last come to you with information about the LCAP draft? The last time, you authorized the planning for some of the following personnel expansions that addressed the district goals and LCAP priorities. So the ones that are underlined with the asterisk have been altered in the LCAP. The newcomer class, we removed it from the 2016-17 LCAP. We're putting it in the 1718 LCAP. First of all, we don't have enough students to fill a class. But also, we're looking at the budget, too. And then also, for the district school resource coordinator, it is a priority, but it's... We're going to wait and see about funding it. So it's not included in the LCAP in the current budget, but it's in... Sorry. It's not included in the current budget, but it is included in the LCAP with the label "pending funding." So we're going to wait until the governor's budget comes through to see, can we fund it in 2016, '17? And if we can, then we move forward. If we can't, it's going to be in 1718. So just so that you know, some of those updates from the last time we had shared. This is... You see full pages in your packet, but there's also a copy for the public. It's also in Spanish. But these are just some highlights. You've seen a similar flyer to this before. What we've done is we've created several documents just to help the public access some of the information in the LCAP. The LCAP is right here. It's 94 pages. I doubt very many people are going to sit and read all 94 pages. And we want our public, our stakeholders, to really understand what's in this document because it's supposed to be a transparent, engaging document. And right now, it's really not. So I'm trying to make it engaging with showing the highlights. And then you'll also see the template of the LCAP has four sections. And what I've done is I have taken those sections word for word and just put it into simpler documents. So the blue is just how we engage stakeholders in looking at this current year, as well as how we engage stakeholders in preparing for next year's LCAP. So that's all the language in there. And then we also have, in pink, are the goals, the four goals we have, and then the metrics, how we're measuring progress towards those goals. So we separated those out. And then in yellow, it's the same goals, but then the actions that we're doing towards supporting those goals. And so the LCAP is long because we have to show three years. So a lot of the actions are repeated because if it's working, we're going to keep doing it. And then also, there's a lot of redundancy in here. So we just simplified it. So this is word for word from the LCAP. People can access it. All of these documents that I've shared with you, including the draft, LCAP, are located on our district webpage, under the LCAP webpage. And so, and actually, not just these documents, but many, many more documents that people can access. So if people are interested in going deeper, they can. I would recommend starting with the highlights first, just to access. As you know, we do have our four goals. The first goal is always student learning and then professional learning for our staff, positive school climate or environment, and community engagement. So what are our next steps? There is going to be a public hearing on June 8, the regularly scheduled board meeting. And then after... That will also have the budget, I believe, shared at that meeting as a public hearing. And then June 22, we'll be needing board approval so that we can submit it to the county office, San Mateo County Office of Education by July 1. And then they'll let us know by October 8. I have a feeling they're going to let us know a lot earlier. We've been meeting with them, getting a lot of technical assistance along the way. We've been getting a lot of positive feedback. They've actually said to me, "Do you mind if we share this with other districts as a model?" So I think we're in good shape. And they've seen this draft. Actually, I was told today someone thought we were done because they've seen so much of the draft. I said, "No, we still need board approval." And that was coming from folks from the county. So I feel good, in good shape, that the county will approve this plan. We have a few modifications to make. Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Spotted on the very last page. I forgot a decimal. So one school's allocation or expenditures went into the millions instead of the 100,000. So we will be correcting that as well. Happened to be TRP. Instead of 300,000, it was 3 million. So I will be making that correction. So thank you. I've looked at this document so many times that sometimes you gloss over. And then there are going to be some modifications made because Piac had a recommendation as well, just for wordsmithing. And so we'll be making some of those changes that you'll see in June. Today was just really a way to let you know what changes are and you have the actual LCAP. So are there any questions for me?
I just want to say I appreciate you giving us this early. This is really great. Thank you for sharing it early because it's good. Thank you.
Yeah. I know that's one of the things you had mentioned about trying to see how we can start seeing it early. And I agree. I think it's great that we have an opportunity to spend more time with it. So thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
I look more closer for decimal points, too.
Believe me, I understand as somebody who proof reads my own work repeatedly and then has proofreaders who will point out all the mistakes I made. I totally get that.
It can happen, yeah.
Thank you very much. It's great to see.
And I love the way you laid it out, too.
Amazing work. You've done a great job of making it clear and accessible.
So stay with me, I'm next.
Okay. So don't go away. Under curriculum and instruction, this is the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee update. Members or leaders representing the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee will share updates of the committee meetings for 2015, '16, and next steps for increasing parent involvement at all Jefferson Elementary School District schools.
I'd just like to make a comment on the last item. So throughout the county, Jefferson Elementary and Jefferson Union High School District have gone above and beyond what is required in the LCAP development process. And we compare ourselves to each other all the time. And it's like, oh, we should do more. Oh, I should do that. They should do this, you know? But when we compare it to other districts in the county and they just have like one meeting for input, it becomes apparent that we're certainly doing a thorough job. And like I said, we compare ourselves to the high school district when we say we can do a better job. And they compare themselves to what we're doing and they say that they can do a better job, too. But we're certainly doing far more than any other district is doing. I live in San Francisco and I had students in that district and I never heard anything about LCAP development during that time. So they had secret meetings somewhere to get input, but it didn't include inviting me. So anyway, thank you, Ms. McCullic, for designing this process.
Yes. Thank you. That's great to hear. Thank you for sharing that.
So part of the process is involving the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee. And I'd like to introduce, you may already know, May Chan. And she's representing Piac tonight, and so we're going to co-present. So we're just providing an update on what has happened with the committee this year. It's actually a requirement of the board policy to share what's happened on the committee. And so, just to let you know, what is Piac, the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee? And so I just put the actual language from the board policy, which is policy and AR Regulation 6020. And I highlighted in bold and underlined, that's really to ensure there's adequate opportunities to implement a parent involvement policy, to make sure that schools have strategies to engage families in their school, as well as the district supports that. And so that kind of explains it. But we also, whatever we're doing at the district, we don't want to interfere with what PTAs are doing as well. And so really, the purpose of Piac has shifted a little bit since the past because of the Local Control Accountability Plan. It's become a very critical committee for engaging families and approving this plan because a big part of the plan is parenting family engagement. And as you can see, it's one of our goals. And so that's what's mentioned at the very beginning, is it's one of the new purposes of this committee is to be an advisory committee on the LCAP. And then also, part of the committee and something that's been mentioned a lot this year is that we really want to have more opportunities for parents from different schools to share activities that they can then bring back to their school sites. This year was... A lot of it was focused on the LCAP because it's still pretty new. But we hope in the future that we're going to really spend more time sharing ideas for engaging families. And then also, not only sharing amongst each other, but advising the district staff on how we can better engage families. And so we've gotten a lot of great ideas that have already been implemented in the district as well. And I'll turn it over to May Chan.
Good evening. I just wanted to add as a personal note that I appreciate the opportunity to participate in the Parental Involvement Advisory Committee again this year. Our committee is comprised of parent representatives from each school site and district representatives. For the 2015-'16 school year, we met four evenings, November 4 of 2015, January 12 of 2016, March 8, and May 17. For the next school year, 2016-'17, we actually have five meetings scheduled for the next year, starting earlier in October, on October 4 and November 15 of 2016. For 2017, we'll be meeting January 24, March 7, and May 16, which will be a joint meeting with the D-LAC to review and approve the following year's LCAP draft.
So we thought we would bring the committees together since they're approving the same draft and that way we can support each other. Short but sweet, any questions?
I don't have questions, but I want to say thank you both for the presentation and thank you, May. May and I go way back in our PTA days and literacy fair here in Daly City. And it's wonderful to see you continue to serve our communities and represent our families. Thank you.
Thank you. It's all for the kids. You know that.
I want to say thank you to Ms. McCullic and May for leading the presentation today as well as planning all those Piac meetings. I've been to a couple of the meetings this year and I know that you guys do a great job in terms of educating parents as well as making sure that they know what is the plan for the LCAP process throughout the entire year. So I just want to appreciate and say thank you for all your help on making sure that everyone knows what's the plan and how we can actually get a plan that actually reflects our school district. So thank you.
Well, I'll say thank you as well. And I want to do a little hats off to May because she received an award from PTA for all her outstanding services. She's a very humble person who doesn't always think she's going to be recognized, but she is because you do so much for our kids and for our schools. And thank you so much for what you do. And you've been saying, you also... She also involved with the Literacy Day. And so there's a lot of things that she does. And an opportunity to say thank you in public to all the great stuff you do.
And the honorary service day, too. Honorary service awards.
That's what I just said. I started saying that PPA honored her for that.
Yeah, that's great.
And so this is great that you have these dates ahead of time, which is wonderful.
That's the plan.
Do you have a time for them?
They're 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And they're on the website, too. Or they will be.
I'm learning to go on the website eventually. But I do like Maria's little updates. But thank you. No, this is great. Thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. Can I ask one question, though? When you plan the activities for the parent involvement, are they activities of learning things besides...
Buries. It could be like a math night. It could be a performance. It could... There's whatever the school wants to do based on what the school's interest is. But it's really sharing, cross-sharing of ideas is what we want to get to so that we can, you know, what activities helped get your families engaged and so people can share.
Usually food, right?
Exactly. We feed at Piac, too.
Yeah, I know.
If I can tag in while you're talking... I also want to thank May while, you know, we're all jumping on the May bandwagon here. She has been really dedicated to Piac for the last couple of years. And I just really appreciate... She has great ideas and insight and she's an invaluable member of the committee and team. And so, and I really appreciate her coming tonight, too, and sitting through the almost, you know, two hours of the meeting to present with me. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. And thank you both and the rest of the Piac committee as well for that work and that commitment to our schools. All right. Thank you.
Progress, can you move the paper?
Section 13, Classified Personnel. We have a retirement. The administration recommends approval of the retirement request from Kathleen F. Riley, School Administrative Assistant Fernando Rivera, effective June 18, 2016, and requests an appropriate resolution. Be prepared commending her for her years of service with the district. Ms. Riley has been employed by the district since November 10, 1997.
I'd like to make a motion... I'd like to make a motion that we approve the retirement request from Kathleen Riley, effective June 18, 2016, and an appropriate resolution, be prepared commending her for her many years of service with the district. And I would like to say, I think she's done a tremendous job in the district. First, working at, John F. Kennedy. I knew, I was, I thought that was it.
First person I worked for.
What was it? And then she did move on later on to go over to Fernando Rivera. And she's always been a big help to everybody, so she's just going to be missed.
Great gal. So do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, enjoy retirement, that was eighteen years with the district. Section 14, Board Member Comments, Reports, and Reflection on Board Meeting Guidelines.
I chose, we will respect differences. We will show respect and never dismiss or devalue others. And I think we all reflected on that this evening. I, I did just want to say, I, I also was able to attend the employee recognition and the annual student award ceremony, which are both highlights of serving on the board. Being able to recognize our students and our teachers and staff is just a wonderful thing to be a part of. One of the highlights of being in this position. I also wanted to commend all of the families that will be celebrating graduations in the next few days or have already, already celebrated graduations. I'm glad to be able to see, my, my son graduated this Saturday, and so five down and one to go, so. And it's just a great time, it's just a wonderful time. And, and he would not have been able to make it this far and to have found some resilience and grit without having some wonderful teachers, and some who have been part of this district and who are still part of this district. It was wonderful for me to have my, my second son's teacher get recognized, I think thirty years of service out of MHT, and who came up and said, you remember me? I'm Hammy's teacher, you know? And she said that she was excited to see that he's at Cal now. And it's wonderful that he's able to continue to do well and excel because of a wonderful educator who's still part of his life. And I say thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart to all the wonderful teachers that mold our children, to help them to be better human beings and responsible, responsible students and learners of our, our communities. Thank you, and congratulations to everyone.
So my meeting guidelines, I went to the bottom of the page, where it said, at the end of each meeting, we will reflect on how well we followed our meeting guidelines and addressed our goals. And I'll have to say that for each meeting, we have been doing that. We do reflect on it and talk about it, so I think we're doing fine on that part. I just wanted to, that one kind of got overlooked sometimes.
Taken for granted.
Yeah, so I also would, you know, also like to make a few comments as well, and to wish everybody, yes, great graduations and all the different celebrations. I think I mentioned before, I did go to Westmore High School for their awards. And it's nice, because that whole group of students there that were achieving so well at, at Westmore, they either came from Fernando or Ben Franklin or, TRP, sorry, sorry, TRP. That's because you're sitting right here. TRP. I won't forget TRP. Anyway, although there's a few students that come from other schools as well, but the vast amount of them are. And, and I always mention that, when I'm at that school, presenting awards from Broadmoor to them, to two students. And I just say that you were all students from our schools and, you know, wish them all a lot of luck, so. So for, for all of that, I say, it's well worth watching what we, what we do with our teachers. And I have to say that there are children that come back to schools, and they're looking for the teachers that taught them. And that's really, that's a reward that our teachers are getting, because they're, they're remembered by their students. And there are times when, if you ask an adult, you know, who inspired you? They'll always say, it was a teacher, it was always a teacher. And if you ask some of the students when they're young, what they want to be, they always want to be a mother and father, because those are the first love of their lives. And then it's the teacher, so. And it's a shame, because if you look back at history, I don't think teachers were ever, ever given high salaries or, or, they used to be. I have a paper that says that teachers couldn't even date. They wouldn't even allow the women to date, you know, for crying out loud. So we've come a long ways, and I hope we can get to that higher plateau where we can show that they're professionals and that they deserve. I think everyone says that, the teachers deserve to be paid what, what, what they, how they deliver. And they do deliver to the maximum. So, and we know what, what faces us also, but we have to never forget that. So what was the other thing we, the other thing that we went to? Oh, you mentioned the, the student awards. That is a special day, and we had a student that, she was the guest speaker. And said, you know, in the past, they would invite the mayor of Daly City or somebody, you know, I don't know. You know, they're important, but, excuse me, excuse me. They're important, but when they picked someone like this student who spoke, oh my God, I think there's, everybody was so impressed of what she said. And she came from our schools, from Fernando Rivera, sorry, Fernando Rivera. So other than that, I, I want to take an opportunity, I think we have another meeting before, but I do want to take an opportunity to wish all the teachers a fantastic summer as well. And, and thank you for all coming tonight. I really appreciate that you come out and speak.
I selected, we will listen actively to all ideas. We will listen openly without preparing responses. I thought it kind of reflected the meeting. A lot of people came out, tried to explain their support and why they love their teachers. So I just want to make sure that we, we listen openly as well as understand the budget process and the LCAP. A lot of this kind of ideas came in, so just making sure that we take in all that information wholly and just not prejudge anything ahead of time. I also want to congratulate everybody graduating from elementary school, middle school, high school, college. There's all that happening right now, so just want to wish them all the best for that. And happy Memorial Day weekend. And then happy summer for people on summer break.
Well, once again, we were thinking along the same lines, because I also selected the one about, we will respect differences and show respect and never dismiss or devalue others. And I believe we did a pretty good job of accomplishing that. Hope we can go on. And while I'm extending the congratulations to all the people who are graduating, be aware that the students are graduating from high school. So keep your eyes peeled when you're out on the roads the next few nights, so you know that, you know, we'd like to think that everybody is good and sensible, but, yeah. So I know that Oceana, at least, is graduating tomorrow night, because we get up at a very, very early hour to fix breakfast for them beforehand. So, yeah, so. Westmore is tomorrow afternoon, okay? So we will have newly released high school students on the world in the next couple of days, they're on the ground in our town, and congratulations to all of them.
One thing I neglect to say, I just want to compliment our teachers' union for coming tonight. One, for speaking for yourself, but also for classified. But also because you did it in a very professional manner tonight. It was wonderful, because I think we heard every word. Thank you for addressing us the way you all did, it was great.
And our next item is the persons wishing to address the board on closed session items. I think everybody, we gave you the chance to do that earlier so that people didn't have to sit through the entire meeting. And that brings us to our closed session. So we will take a very short recess and be back into closed session in about five minutes. Thank you for coming, see you shortly.